You ready? Let's start the Lancaster City Council meeting. City Clerk.
Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Molly.
President.
Anne.
President.
Underwood Jacobs.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Chris.
Present.
Mayor, Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
And we have Pastor Daryl Doris, who's going to do the invocation.
Father, we thank you right now. We thank you for another day to serve you with our gifts. We ask right now, God, that you continue to shine on us with your grace and mercy. Touch our city council, our mayor. Continue to give them wisdom, God, to lead this great city. We thank you right now, God, for all that you are doing for us. We ask right now, God, that you continue to just lead and guide us in all the ways of business. And, God, we ask right now that you continue to just bless this city, God. Allow us to be prosperous. Allow us to be unified. Allow us to come together as one. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Ooh, I forgot. How could I forget? All right. Marvin, would you... Please remain standing and place your hand over your heart and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I was just enjoying a conversation in my head. Confuses me sometimes. Okay, presentations. Where's that? This is for the oversight board? Yeah. Okay, I want to take a moment to recognize the members of the Lancaster Successor Agency Oversight Board. This outstanding group of individuals has worked diligently to improve our city through the completion of the long-range property management plan and the housing assist transfer, which kept low-to-modered-income housing local, all while representing key community agencies and continuously ensuring the best interests of our citizens were protected in advance. As the successor agency board is dissolved to make way for a supervisory district oversight board, you know, I could do a lot better job naming those things. I'd like to thank Elizabeth Brubaker, Edward Knutson. Thank you, Ed. Come on up. We'll do this. Sandy Smith, Jody Shepherd Troth, Jim Vos, John Walker, and David Vieira. So everybody that was here for that. We, on behalf of the city, I really do want to thank you. That was a huge amount of money that could have just evaporated on us, or, you know, assets that could have evaporated. And in a lot of cities it did. So that was quite an effort. Thank you. All of whom have dedicated their time, energy to the progression of development here in Lancaster. On behalf of the entire Lancaster City Council, I would like to congratulate each of you on a job well done. And I have certificates for you. You guys could paper your house in certificates. Couldn't you? It's always... There's like 25 people in this city that you constantly see them, and you constantly are doing things. And we would be in a much worse position without you. And somehow managed to run colleges and businesses and planning commissions. Okay, let's get a picture. And I gained 10 pounds, so I'm having trouble. She didn't say that. Good. No, sir. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second, Ed.
Second, Ed. Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Consent calendar. Any speaker cards?
No. Yes, we have one on CC2. So I'll make a motion that we approve. The consent calendar is currently comprised pulling CC2.
I'll second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous.
And the city attorney advised me that I have to recuse myself because the city returned my money that I gave them. And she said, under the abundance of caution, they should do that.
So I'm accusing the same for the same reasons.
I'm smelling a rat, aren't you?
They said they got money.
I didn't get no money.
You didn't run for election last time.
They each made deposits, and the expenditure did not reach the amount of their deposits.
I see. Okay. And I guess I could guess who the speaker card is?
Michael, did you get money too? I wonder if Michael got money.
Mayor Paris, Council, ladies and gentlemen. I'm speaking about the check and wire registers. And I don't know if you have a copy with you up there, but there's in the book in the back, we have all the names of the people who've been compensated by the city. And I've been reviewing that book for years.
I bet you have.
I want to make a suggestion that the way it is now, we have people by name alphabetically. I would like to see the different services put together in a bunch so that anything related to public works or parks is in that category. The council will have the benefit to see the expenditures in that department. And furthermore, if it's possible, and I don't want to create any problems for Pam, show how that money is detracted from the city budget, like you have a checking account. I know it sounds juvenile, sounds simple, but I think it would show a great transparency because the citizens could see how the money's spent and see how it's detracted from the city budget.
I think they use principles of addition and subtraction, don't you? Now, the other part of that, though, that kind of makes sense, as surprising as you are to hear that from me. It does make sense. Let's look at it. I mean, that...
Okay, thank you.
Gives some reason to it. Thank you, Michael. Okay, you guys can... Oh, we got to vote.
I'll make a motion to approve CC2.
I'll second.
Let's vote. Two extensions passes unanimously. Thank you.
We were looking for money.
Stole my almonds. God knows what he's doing with the money.
Plant almond trees.
Public hearing. PH1.
Aye.
Yes.
JCB1.
Oh, I know which one that one is.
We have two speaker cards.
Okay, who's presenting?
On JCB1, also notably, there was an amended staff report for item D. You have it in front of you. There was merely a typo in the description of the resolution.
Okay, Jeff Hogan's doing the...
And Mayor Paris, this is the budget presentation. We gave it the last time, the first meeting.
So what are we doing here?
So we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, good. So we don't have to redo it?
Not unless you want to hear the 25 minutes.
Fran, you don't want to hear that again, do you?
Part of it.
Good afternoon, Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Chris, council members, ladies and gentlemen, and staff, of course. My name is Fran Sarah Saris. I just want a little bit of clarification. On the latter part where it says, "The city is required to adopt the budget by July the 1st," but my question is to you is the... I'll go down a little bit on the paragraph. "The proposed budget is accumulation of many months of work by the city council and the staff in reviewing priorities and evaluating programs to meet those priorities with a focus on maintaining responsive and relevant services for residents." My question is, as well as the city council priorities, I want to know is, how much is for public safety? How much is financial stability? And also on the homeless initiatives, is that part of what we talked about at the last meeting where the inside development, we got a grant for building of the... Oh, my goodness, I lost my mind here. The proposal of the building of the Kensington campus, is that included in this homeless initiative? Also, there's another... There's a grant or a bond for $13 million for the site. Where is all this money coming from? And are we still... Is it still in our budget to give out this money? And then you also have for beautification, which is understandable. Infrastructure innovations, what infrastructure? And modernization? But mostly, I think I'm concerned with the homeless initiative. Are we duplicating monies from prior? Or am I reading this incorrectly?
There's a lot there, but in terms of the $13 million, no. That's a revenue bond, essentially. It's not backed by the city. The city just approves it, and it's funded by a state entity. All of the support services for Kensington and homeless that the council has set as priorities are included in this budget. They were previously, for the most part, adopted this last fiscal year. The public safety budget, give or take, is about $30 million. Twenty-seven of that, give or take, is the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. You mentioned financial stability. Our reserves are about a little north of 30%, which includes a 10% for council, 10% financial stability reserve, and 10% unallocated. All of the other priorities that have been the council's priorities throughout the year, whether it comes to homelessness or beautification, are included in that budget. The budget is online, viewable by anyone. There's also hard copies at City Hall, and I'd be happy to go over it with you, as they would at your commission if you asked for it at the commission as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for clarifying that. And I will get with you on that. Thank you very much for your time. Keep smiling. It's good for you.
All right, I'll put it to the test. I'm going to call Michael up here, and I'm going to try to keep smiling.
Mayor Paris, Council, staff. You know, I've mentioned this before, that when we go through the budget process, that the public should be part of it as it begins and ends. And I suggested that perhaps instead of having the department heads go to the city manager's office with their request and review it with him, that they have a public session down here where the public can come and listen to the different departments present their requests to the city manager. Mark just made up a point. You know, we do have the internet. That could be done on a website. The public can be notified that we're going to discuss this on the website, and you can put in your input. It's an innovative part. The whole thing is, let the public have something to say about how you're going to spend the money in the beginning. I know that you have priorities. You know more than I do about it. But I would like to have input about maybe the sheriff's department. You know, they're not doing what they're supposed to do because they don't have deputies. Maybe when that comes up, a citizen like me would want to say, you know, can we do something else? So the bottom line is, involve the citizens in the beginning in this process, and then toward the end, like now, if they want to go up and make a comment on the final thing, they can. Thank you.
You know, Michael, on the face of it, a lot of what you have to say makes a little sense. But do you know how much these people make? I mean, we don't make anything. Our time really doesn't cost the taxpayers any money. But these folks, it's a fortune. This city council meeting is a fortune. The amount of time that is spent answering your questions and your issues that doesn't appear to be an issue to anyone else is astronomical. And the answer to your request is absolutely not. Thank you. So, is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution 18-31, adopt Resolution 1832, adopt Resolution 1833, and adopt Resolution 1834, E, F, G, and H of the budget.
I second that.
And CCEA recommendation, fiscal year budget 2018, 2019.
But that was a separate vote.
That is... We can do them together, or you can do them separately?
Let's do it separate.
Very good.
Well, if you guys would slow down, I'd close the public hearing. The public hearing is now closed. Would you like to repeat your motion?
Sure. That's all that rest you got from sitting down early. Okay. I'll repeat my motion.
Now, this, folks, is when you resist the tit-for-tat. You know, he makes a shot, and so then I want to make a shot back, and then he makes one back to me. And the reason I'm bringing it up is because as soon as I learned to quit doing that with my wife and just take the shot, my life got so much better. Just thought I would impart that wisdom to everyone. Okay.
Yeah. We're not married. I'll repeat my motion.
I second that. Let's vote.
Thank God that's recorded.
Passes unanimously.
I'll move that we adopt the CCEA fiscal year 2018, 19 recommendations and budget.
I'll second that motion.
Let's vote. Okay. Let's open the public hearing on PH2. Any cards?
Yeah, I think we have a couple.
So who's presenting? Jeff?
Are we on PH1? Okay.
PH1.
PH1.
I thought I heard you say PH2. Sorry.
We're on PH2.
PH1.
I thought we just did PH1.
No, we just did JCB1. So we're on PH1.
Okay. Let's just speed that up and go right past it. Let's go to PH1.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I want to take this chance, actually, to introduce to the public and to the city council our new community development manager, Larissa De La Cruz, who's going to be making the presentation. She's been with us for seven months now. So you can come on up, Larissa. So she's going to be doing all the heavy lifting tonight. We got a few presentations from the planning division of Development Services. So I'm going to turn it over to her, so...
This better not be controversial, Jeff.
Let's hope not. Good evening, Mayor Paris and members of the city council. It is my pleasure to be here tonight at my very first council meeting, so let's hope it's not controversial. The item before you this evening is a request for a general plan amendment to amend the land use designation from non-urban to commercial and a zone change from rural residential to commercial plan development. The site is located at the southeast corner of Avenue L and 20th Street West. The site is approximately 1.98 acres and is currently developed with a single family residence and other accessory structures. The site is bordered by a variety of uses, including residential to the south, commercial to the north, and other various live-work units to the west. The applicant is requesting to demolish the existing structures and construct a 3,000-square-foot mini-mart, a 3,800-square-foot gas island canopy, a 1,500-square-foot car wash facility, a 1,600-square-foot oil and lube building, and a 2,600-square-foot commercial pad for a drive-through restaurant and retail services. Vehicle access would be provided from both 20th Street West and Avenue L, providing adequate circulation in and out of the site. Just to provide some background, the planning commission originally heard this item at their regular meeting on December 18th of 2017. The planning commission approved a conditional use permit but had a split vote on the general plan amendment and zone change, thereby resulting in a denial. The applicant filed an appeal, and the city council heard this item at their second meeting in February, at which they voted to defer the decision to the planning commission for review and reconsideration, and further advised that the applicant hold a community meeting to address community concerns. The city council also directed staff to present the project to the Architectural Design Commission for further review. Since then, the applicant has complied with the items specified, and a community meeting as well as a presentation to the Architectural Design Commission was conducted. Residents raised concerns related to the proximity to the residential uses, traffic concerns, and air quality. To address some of these concerns, the applicant revised their landscape plans to provide additional buffer areas along the south side. They implemented a higher, more decorative wall and coordinated with the Antelope Valley Quality Management District to ensure that they are in compliance with their regulations. The Architectural Design Commission also approved the proposed design and added additional conditions of approval that would increase landscaping and additional articulation along the buildings. Lastly, on May 14th, the planning commission heard the item and added yet additional conditions of approval that would further enhance the design of the building, and ultimately adopted a resolution recommending that the city council also approve the general plan amendment and zone change. The applicant is currently working with staff on revising their elevations and design to improve the quality of design and address the concerns raised by both the residents and the Planning and Architectural Design Commission. Staff believes that the proposed use will be compatible with the surrounding land uses. The change of the land use designation and zone, in addition, the construction and operation of the proposed development would introduce a variety of land uses and provide a service to this area that doesn't currently exist. A range in land uses would provide a well-balanced community where residents and workers can live, work, shop, and play. With that, staff recommends that the city council take action, as identified in your staff report, and staff and the applicant are available should the council have any further questions. Thank you.
What was the result in the Architectural Design Commission? Was there a vote?
It was ultimately approved.
What does that mean, count-wise?
I'm sorry?
What was the split? What was the vote?
It was a unanimous vote.
And the planning commission was?
Excuse me, I need to grab my file.
Hold on, Jim's right here. It was 4 to 2. Commissioners Cook and Harvey descending. Vice Chair Hall was absent due to a family illness. Speaker, any questions?
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and the members of the city council. My name is Sean Robert Pease. I'm an Antelope Valley student, currently enrolled in a political science class, and I need to work on a research paper, so I need to come here. So anyway, my first question was, what are the pros and cons to splitting the state of California into three states?
Wait a minute. You have to do that at the end. I'm sorry. This is just for the item that we're considering. At the end, we have public comment, and we're more than happy to talk to you then.
Oh, I was told I was supposed to fill out everything in the card, so...
Yeah, you're good.
No questions, then ignored the card as the current agenda. Sorry.
That's all right. No problem.
Would you like us to change your card to non-agendized?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Forgive my confusion.
Good evening. As I told the planning commission back on the original meeting pertaining to that, the issues that most all of the homeowners around there have, as well as myself, is we've already got a big commercial lot that's directly across the street from that one that has near no business in it. The only thing that I see all the time in there is transients and whatnots, using it as a giant sleeping area. This, you know, we have almost an identical facility on K and I believe it's 15th or 17th Street. I don't think we need car washes, Jiffy lubes, and gas stations, and alcohol sales on every major corner in the city. It's getting ridiculous. When I moved here from Palmdale, everybody kept telling me, yeah, look for a house here, look for... You know, I didn't, you know, buy in an area that had huge amounts of population. It had large lots in most of the area. I live in a custom home on an acre and a quarter because I don't want a whole bunch of people around me. I don't want a whole lot of traffic around me. This is just going to generate that much more, as is the next project. I wish you would consider all of that. I mean, it's one thing to have little, you know, mom-pop businesses that we do have towards the west, but everything else that's commercial is in that one corner that's basically naked because the business owner charges so much rent that they even chased out the major grocery store there. So what do we have? A bunch of vacant buildings there. Now we're going to put in something that's going to just generate people hanging out and drinking beer, you know, when they turn in their recycles. You know, we don't need that kind of stuff. We already have that over on K. You know, we don't need every single corner populated with that type of business. It'd be one thing if it was a little mom-and-pop business. This just isn't necessary. It is not necessary in this area. If you can't drive an extra, you know, 12 blocks to get your car washed and filled up, you might want to think about yourself, if you can't drive that little, little bit more.
How close are you to it?
How close am I to that business? I'm on L, right around L4 and 22nd, so I'm just... PH2, I'm also going to talk to you about, which is corner of L and 22nd. So, I mean, we've got projects being dumped all over us, and it's just, you know, like I said, you know, we live in, as you guys are well aware of, because I spoke to you guys before, because of cow water. In that area, our home prices take a hit left and right. You know, our value just keeps sinking because as soon as people find out it's cow water, it's like they run.
For good reason.
Exactly. And dumping all of this on us is just killing us, you know? I mean, you know, sorry, but that's our life savings. It might not be a big deal to you guys, but, you know, I mean, I'm quite well aware... You don't know, but our family history goes way back with your father, so...
So why would you think it wasn't a big deal? It is a big deal to me. I mean, and it seems to be...
disposable income to a lot of people is, you know, is...
I understand that. We have been... We have been incredibly blessed, I, I agree.
You know, so when it comes to, you know, that kind of stuff, a lot of people just, you know, it's like, "Oh, well, whatever, we're just going to move along with our project", rather than really looking at it and saying, "How is this impacting all of those around us?"
However the vote goes, and I'm not clear how I'm going to vote on it, even to this moment, is, a lot of people, the Commissions, you know, have put a lot of energy into trying to find the right decision. It's not an easy decision, because you do have a legitimate interest and a legitimate argument. It's totally understandable. The countervailing argument, of course, is, what about the, the landowner who buys this and it is a perfect commercial place? And it's not an easy decision, is what I'm telling you.
Well, and I can understand that. I mean, the prior owner tried to get a zoning change and was refused by the Commission, so it, it makes me kind of go, hmm...
That was quite, that was quite a while ago, and the, you, you've got to agree, the city is, is going in a different path and direction than it ever has before, and it, it's difficult to figure out how to do that with as least collateral damage as possible.
Well, and I know, and I know an argument has been made that it will slow traffic down, you know, having different, it's not going to slow traffic down. Same way, having, you know, a law that says that you can't do fireworks is going to make the guy that does it every single night, that when you call, they say, "Oh, well..."
That law makes Palmdale a fortune, I mean...
You know, I mean, it's, if they're illegal, then stop somebody that's doing it every night, you know what I mean? And so, putting something in...
I can assure you, I can assure you slowing traffic down is the least of the...
No, 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 I'm saying that's an argument that, that the builder has made, and, and it's not going to slow traffic down. The speed limit is 55, people drive 65.
I, uh...
You know, I mean, that's just...
You could, you got a, you got a, you got good points, and they're, it's difficult, is all I can tell you.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
All right?
Well, I appreciate your consideration and hope that you all will vote no.
Okay. You know, if you want me to call your name, you got to write it so I can read it. Bob White? No. Benjamin Flint?
Brian? Brian Flint?
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's all right, that's all right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I am a newer resident of Lancaster. Um, I live kitty-corner to the proposed project, the housing development, kind of on the southwest corner, within court, which is about maybe 50 homes. Um, I'm in opposition to the project as well, um, for the various reasons that the last speaker, um, noted, but also, when I moved to Lancaster, I moved to kind of a semi-rural area, and I moved for that specific reason. I mean, I'm from Los Angeles. I still work in Los Angeles, so this was like, sort of a new, a new beginning, new issue, new, you know. So to propose a gas station mini-mart, maybe a 24-hour situation, on that land seems to me incongruent with the land use surrounding that area, which is homes on the east side and the north side, and also across the street on the west side. So on three sides of it, there's homes, with a commercial development where Ralph's used to be on the other side. So my opposition to it basically comes down to, I, I, I have some security concerns, um, I have some traffic concerns, I have, you know, some mitigate some air quality concerns, I mean, it's horse property apparently to the, to the east of that, and these people light pollution, things like that, but, um, I just don't understand, you're trying to amend two different, the general plan tonight and also rezone. So what are, what's the general plan there for? And what is the zoning issue there for? If you can just up and redo it at any moment to make a new development for economic reasons? I mean, there's a plan in place, correct?
Let, let me respond to that. When's the last time we did a general plan?
Uh, roughly 2010.
So eight years.
I mean, I, I read a little bit through the general plan, the introduction of it, and a lot of it was dealing with zoning in rural versus urban areas, and I think this is a semi-rural area that now is going to be more urban. And, you know, as, as a newer resident driving around Lancaster, I see a lot of, what I like, it's kind of urban plight, dilapidated old shopping centers that are no longer useful or tenants have moved out, and maybe those can be used for new, newer redevelopment, instead of developing rural land. So, actually, that's about all I have to say, but I am in opposition to it for these various reasons.
All right, I understand your point. The problem with, you know, I mean, the, the answers are there. The problem with the old shopping centers is you got to spend the money to tear them down. So it's cheaper, I mean, a lot cheaper...
Yeah, I understand that.
...to, to build on undeveloped land than, than do that.
But then you have old and new mixed together.
I, I, I get it.
And...
Now, let me, let me finish. I mean, what it, what it really comes down to for me is that particular stretch, that, that one mile stretch between L and M. It, it's going to be fully developed at some point. It's a major thoroughfare on L, and we need to attract as much of that tax space as we can, or keep as much of that, that tax space as we can in the city, because if they just cross Avenue M, we don't get the taxes. So that, that's why this, this balancing test is constantly going on. And again, like I said, I don't know that that countervails the, the issues of the people living there and the people that bought a, a, a rural environment with very large lots. They spent a lot of money for those lots for that reason. Uh, I just want everybody to know what goes on in my head.
Yeah, I, I understand, it's economics. I mean, it's money.
Yeah.
Money for the city, I get it. But I think the money could be spent in redeveloping, say, the Ralph Shopping Center, or talking to the owner and getting tenants in there.
I would agree. I, I just don't know how we go about that, because you're merging private property rights with public monies, and it's, it's not that simple to, to do that sort of thing.
Well, maybe, maybe some innovative thinking needs to happen, that's one...
That's right. Marvin points out that we used to have redevelopment money for that, but our illustrious, uh, state government...
Well, somehow you redevelop downtown, so, I mean, that's a good...
It was prior. Yeah, but I did, we did that without redevelopment money. Isn't that right?
No, no.
It was before.
We used the money, it was developed after it went away, but we used the money before. We tied it up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that was redeveloped.
I mean, we don't have that money anymore, is what I'm saying.
Right. Yeah, I understand.
All right, and we don't have Scott Erlich being interested in doing it over there. I mean, that really, we had a great developer who was willing to do downtown. It was, it was a fabulous, you know, converging of things that occurred that year. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Vern Roberts?
Evening, Councilmembers and everybody here. Uh, I am the previous owner of that property, and in just to answer to your question, you said it was quite some time ago when I requested a zone change. I did it over a period of 12 years, at least four times, two general contractors and myself. The last time was in October, late September, early October of 16, just before I listed the property, and was told emphatically, "No." Under no circumstances would, wherever, it was non-conforming per the city's master plan. It would never allow either ingress or commercial egress onto Avenue L because of the safety of no, because of known accidents resulting in injuries and death on that property. And I got to tell you, if you've driven in Antelope Valley, how many times you've misjudged a car's speed coming and almost got clobbered or did get hit? It's all over the valley, not just on that street. And also I see somebody did, I had one other note here about a, a security wall, thinking a six-foot wall for security. I'm over 70 years old and I can do a six-foot wall if I need to, so... Well, I was also, it's one of the other reasons I was given by the City of Lancaster that this would not happen, was there was no commercial sanitation allow, available or allowed. Because there is nothing there, there is no sewer, period. And there was also, they were quoting the, that there's white fence farms CCNRs on that property, which doesn't allow commercial business, basically, just enough, and it's not hooked, it's not in the city water district jurisdiction at all. It's on a, uh, kept on stock, it's a private stock water company on that property. And also there was, uh, I just happened to think about something on the way over. They're talking about, everybody's talking about the, the traffic that we have going right now, with they put up this, this building and the other thing. What happens in six months or a year from now when that little pad out on the front gets a McDonald's in there? What's going to happen to the traffic going in and out onto Avenue L, people going by at 70, 80, 90 miles an hour? I was just there yesterday, I saw a motorcycle go across against a yellow light. If he was doing under 100, I'd be surprised, and he went by that fast, but, uh...
Angela, were you driving a motorcycle?
Well, this guy was laying down over the handlebars and had that thing screwed on all the way, so, you know, it, uh...
Mr. Roberts, I'm a little perplexed. You, when you owned the property, you were trying to get the same zoning change.
No, I was trying to get just a partial zone change, just the front half of the property, so I could put up a couple of little, we'll call them office buildings. Nothing, something that didn't require any large amount of people going in and out. I was talking about maybe a three to four unit, just, just facing L, and then leave the back half of the property as is. That was what my proposal was.
Who in, who in the city told you absolutely not?
Oh, I don't remember the names, I mean, over the period of years, but it just went right across over here in the planning department or anything like that. When there, we made our, you know, say like that, and we were given all these reasons. And that was as late, I say as late as, first, because I made, I wouldn't, I wouldn't made one last inquiry before I listed the property. And I was told that that was just never going to happen under no circumstances. And, yeah, here we go. I guess my main question is just, where's the logic? I don't, I just don't see it.
Well, we only decide the things that are in front of us, and if, if yours wasn't in front of us...
Well, I wasn't allowed to, I wasn't allowed to go this far. I was just told to go away.
That, that just isn't accurate. I mean, I understand staff can be opposed to something...
I can go call my son, my, uh, stepson, who was one of the general contractors that was standing right there, and he made the presentation. We walked out of the place here, and he just shook his, invite me, just remind me never to go back in that place, they don't know what they're doing. He's a general contractor and also a licensed electrician, so...
Okay. Well, I'm sorry you had that experience, but...
Yeah, I'm so am I, because if I'd known this was even possible, I could have got a lot more money for that property.
Mr. Reeves?
Mayor Perez, Council, Staff, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, I oppose this project. Uh, my church is south of here, uh, this location, and as the gentleman mentioned, coincidentally, that area is under a private water district, so that's poetic justice, in my opinion. If he wants to put a car wash, he's going to pay through the nose. I'm looking at the environmental, um, impact study on this, and there's some things you need to take in consideration. Most of the things that they commented on is less than significant impact or no impact. There are a few things that are impacted. For example, they say, "Less than significant with mitigation is a archeological resource." Well, okay. "Result in substantial soil erosion or the loss of topsoil." That's less than significant with mitigation. We're going down, so that's like a C to D, C to D. "Create a significant hazard to the public or environment through the routine transport, disposable hazardous material." That's less than significant with mitigation. "Create a significant hazard to public through reasonably foreseeable upset, accidental conditions, et cetera." Uh, less than foreseeable. So that's C or D, C or D on a scale of A to F. And I keep going through this, and the one that really bothers me is the last one. "Does the project have environmental effects which will cause substantial adverse effects on human beings, either directly or indirectly?" And it says, this is about a D, "Less than significant with mitigation." So in other words, you can't approve a project that you cannot guarantee the public's safety. I mean, we can mitigate this, we can mitigate, but the main factor is the public going to be safe. They're going to be able to go to this location and be safe. And I know for myself that right on the corner there is a two-lane highway that goes south through Palmdale, and it's going to be a mess when people come out of that two-lane and make a right on L into that gas station. And I want to make one more point. I, I talked to Council Malley, uh, tonight about, over at J and 20th, where they're putting up the, the gas station, uh, near his business. This is the only city I have ever seen...
Thank you.
...that lets people put buildings up.
If that red light, when it, when it flashes, that means you have to stop.
Okay, well, you can let me finish my comment, please. I just want to make a, a point...
I don't control the red light.
Well, Mayor Perez, can I make a comment?
You get 30 seconds? No, you get 30 sec, you get three minutes, just like everybody else gets, and when the red light starts beeping or blinking, you have to stop.
So you're cutting somebody off in a public hearing? Thank you.
Yes, let the record reflect that the mayor cut off Michael Reeves at a public hearing. How many times have I done that? 500, 600? All right. Is that it? Anybody else got here late, wants to speak on this issue? Come on in.
Mayor Rex, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Council...
I knew you'd be on television, didn't you?
Mark Maldonado. You guys are doing an awesome job, just to let you guys know that you guys have been great. Progress is going great here in, uh, in Lancaster, but I want to tell you, I've been in the Antelope Valley since 1963, and I've seen the growth, I've seen the progress. And I've also seen, um, safety issues that have, have come up because of a lot of the storefronts that are on corners, especially when they're really close to the residential areas. White Fence Farms, I'm not just speaking on behalf of myself, but I'm also, um, representing Adi Grubel, and, uh, she's the past Secretary for White Fence Farms Homeowners Association. She couldn't be here, so she asked me if I would actually say a couple of things. I'll keep it real simple. 20th Street and Avenue L, right there on the corner, uh, I've lived there now for a little over four years, in White Fence Farms, right on Avenue, uh, on, on, on L4, which is in, the closest cross-street to that is actually Avenue L. My property butts up to the homes that are right there on Avenue L. Uh, I've heard the accidents from where I live, I've seen the traffic, and I've seen the way that they drive. It's pretty congested, and they do, they do speed through there, um, at a pretty high rate of speed. I'm also seeing that, just go up the street to 30th Street and the 7-Eleven over there, you get a lot of loitering, and I noticed that the loitering at a lot of these establishments where there's alcohol or, uh, some type of, some type of food. Uh, it brings in these guys that want to beg for money, and that's going to bring up crime. Uh, we've got Kaiser right there, that's just on the other side of Avenue L, and witnessed people walking down the dirt road on, on 15th Street there with their gowns on, you know, and these are people that have mental issues. I just couldn't imagine being in an area that...
That's a stretch.
It's, it is, but...
Kaiser's a little, pretty far down.
But it's, but it's, it's an element that actually comes into White Fence Farms. But having something on the corner of Avenue L and 20th there, it's, it's just right there, it's in our backyard, and that's the, that's the issue, safety issue. Again, where can you go in the middle of Lancaster, in the heart of Lancaster, and get a two-and-a-half acre property that you can put your horses, you can have some animals, you can, you don't have people that you can hear talking next door from their bathroom window? Uh, you know, it's peace of mind, and when the, from what I understand, with the Homeowners Association, they're just trying to preserve what that was intended for years and years ago, when everybody wanted to live in White Fence Farms. everybody wanted to live in White Fence Farms. It was an elite area to live, and it should stay that way. But I think putting a commercialized business on the corner there, especially what they're, what they're wanting to do, it's gonna cause a lot of safety issues. So if you guys would just keep that in mind when you vote, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Trudy Trow.
Hello, my name is Eugenie Trow. I teach at Antelope Valley College. I have a colleague whose name is Erica. Erica, from the age of five to 12, lived right behind a gas station in her home state. At age 22, she had to have a cancerous kidney removed, and the cancer had developed for a while. There was no history of kidney problems or cancer in her family. It has been a great mystery to her and to, to the family. I mention this because this is why the controls are in place to prevent the exposure to children, very young and also in utero, from the benzene, the toluene, and the xylene. Benzene is the worst, and it is, by the way, mentioned specifically kidney disease as a possible consequence. Now, I understand the initial approval is for a million gallons of gas pumped per year. There are things that happen, namely, we live in a, a part of Los Angeles County that has a lot of people who cannot afford to buy new cars, to keep their cars up, so they're more likely to be polluting, both the air and when you open up the gas tank, the release, especially in the summer, the release of the vapors. And when the fuel tankers come, there is a spillage. It's unavoidable, no matter how precise and up-to-date the controls are. And the estimate is 1.6 gallons of spillage into the air per thousand gallons that are pumped. And the cancer risk is supposed to be kept less than .01 per million people getting cancer, more than other people who don't live near the area that's polluting. And you can actually see a map of where that is, and I would very definitely like to see that prepared for this particular area, because there are homes right next to this gas station.
What are, okay, it's, it's one part per billion of benzene...
Of the pollutants that cause cancer, benzene, toluene, and xylene. Benzene's the worst, again.
Benzene's the worst, and it's one part per billion for eight hours exposure. Do we, we have any air grab, we have any air grab samples for what's around gas stations?
And it's also cumulative, spillage is cumulative.
No, the, the...
I know you're interested in...
Exposure is.
Yeah.
Okay.
We do. Let's answer your question.
We do?
It's a risk to children, and child abuse is more than beating. Child abuse is choosing to expose children to something that they don't have to be exposed to, which happens when you build something in a residential area. Thank you.
So what is it?
Well...
What are the air grabs around gas stations, do we know?
We do the, the air quality across the street from Costco. So Costco, to give you an idea, pumps 1.2 million a year, and this is supposed to be one. So if you see the lines at Costco, it's, it's, it's huge, and it's under the limits for that. So, and we do that because of the apartment buildings across the street from Costco.
So what are they?
I don't know exactly what the, the numbers are, but they're within tolerance at 1.2 million.
All right. Anything else? Any questions?
I have some questions. So I, I, obviously, I understand the concerns that were brought forward, and then there's two letters in our packet today that we received. You know, putting my planning hat back on, and I know sometimes you don't like to hear that, Mayor, but obviously 60th is a major arterial. And Jeff probably could answer this. I mean, obviously, in the general plan and in the traffic plan that we built for the city, obviously Avenue L was designed to take a substantial amount of traffic and move it east to west, primarily to the freeway.
Correct, correct, yes. Avenue L is one of our major arterials in the city.
Right.
Can accommodate the traffic.
Yeah, and almost to the degree, if I have it right, approaching that intersection and with the setbacks, does it not carry probably the greatest amount of traffic, or has the propensity to do so in comparison to, say, Avenue J or Avenue K, given the, what the city has done over the years? At least that's my understanding. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong.
In, in that area, yes.
Right. And so we have a proposal of 1,700 homes built to the west, and here we go as a city through an evolution cycle. As frustrating as it is, I mean, I understand the frustration of, you know, at one point in time, a part of the city was rural, and then it begins to change form over a period of 10, 20, 30 years. So to me, from my position that I take, given the, all the development that has occurred over the years, my sense is, to the west, then as we gravitate towards the freeway, and, and as the city grows, the, and maybe I'm wrong, the assumption is, is some of those vacant corners that are on those major artillery, arterials evolve and become part of, you know, in the build-out of a city, kinda akin to support that traffic that we're moving from east to west. Am I, am I wrong? Am I...
Correct.
Trying to be futuristic and take a look at a plan?
Yes, our general plan is a living, breathing document. The council approved it, but over the years, the council, the commission, staff looks at every project, and if things have changed, or, you know, compatibility has changed, then we look at it on a case-by-case basis, such as the gas station, some other projects coming before you tonight. We look on a case-by-case basis, and we look at the surrounding areas, and that's why a lot of these projects have conditional use permits, so that the council and commission can look at them individually and add conditions to make sure that they're being mitigated to not impact neighbors.
So now, don't we also have a responsibility to mitigate traffic flow in the city so that we're not creating, you know, so why would we wanna take, so help me understand, I just trying to get the understanding, why would we wanna take traffic that's moving east to west? I live on the west side of Lancaster, and I'm moving towards the freeway. Why would we wanna take cars if we're concerned about air pollution and just traffic? Why would we wanna take 'em back north? And I heard the mayor's comment about taking 'em south. Why would we do that? Wouldn't it be prudent for us to continue to try to move that traffic towards the, the direction that it's gonna wanna go? If I live on the west side and I need to travel out of the valley, I'm gonna travel the easiest, most convenient on that major arterial that I know that, I'm almost positive that intersection's probably one of our biggest intersections in Lancaster. Would we not wanna continue that traffic flow towards the freeway?
Well, I think the developer or owner can, you know, speak a little bit about it, but as development occurs on the west side, folks coming towards the freeway, it'll be right in, right out, only into that gas, on the way to the freeway. Folks coming from the north, I don't know if somebody on the east side or by the freeway's gonna drive all the way...
Yeah, back.
West.
Yeah.
So maybe the developer or the owner has more of an idea of what the expectations are in the future.
Right.
But I can't see somebody actually wanting to drive all the way over there when there's some other gas stations closer by.
Yeah, yeah. And then the other thing that came to mind, that came up as a discussion point, is I know the applicant's got a, a similar project over on Avenue K, and so the question I would raise is, what kind of problems has the sheriff's department had where they've gotta go there and, and provide oversight? That would be one question. And then number two, does it not, is it not adjacent to rural residential? Because I lived there for probably seven years, and I believe everything behind that project is zoned acre and a quarter.
Correct. And that's one of the things the commission, council have, have to look at, is compatibility, and whether or not the landscaping, the conditions, the proximity is compatible and can be mitigated.
Right.
So staff felt that the applicant mitigated that. Planning commission looked at it too, so the council's in front of here.
So I guess my question is, two things, is one is, in a planning commission meeting, and this might be for Jim Vos, is, was there, was there concerns that were brought to light on the project on Avenue K?
Well, as you know, we had two hearings on the matter.
Right.
One in December and one in May. There were a number of issues raised by the public, by staff, and the commission, including everything mentioned here tonight, plus probably three more hours of testimony and comment. We literally rung it out.
Nothing surfaced as, as issues from a standpoint of security at the project on K? That, that's repetitive.
Well, the project was reviewed by, this particular project was reviewed by the sheriff's department, and, and they found no reason to oppose it, based on their typical review of gas stations with mini-marts that sell alcoholic beverages. That's the reason the sheriff looks at it.
Okay. And nobody, nobody from the surrounding community in those acre and a quarter lots that have horses and animals and whatnot behind that project on K, nobody ever came before and...
You know, I don't, you know, it's many, many years ago. I don't recall there were, you know, you're talking about seven, eight years ago when that project was heard.
Sure.
The one on K, so, you know, it's not fresh in my mind, that's for sure.
Yeah, I just don't ever recall anything. I just, you know, and I get it, I understand people have real concerns.
Well, that, that original conditional use permit application, there was, there was some controversy on the original permit on, on the project on 17th, because it included spirits, and, and then that portion of the application was withdrawn, and it became beer and wine only, and then it was ultimately approved. I don't believe it was appealed, so...
Okay, all right. I just wanted to bring that to light. I, I mean, I know that it's frustrating to watch a city evolve, and sometimes, you know, it changes from what we originally anticipated, so, okay, thank you.
Who voted against it in the planning commission?
The orig, which time?
Last time.
Okay, the last time, after you sent it back. It was, it was, the dissenters were Commissioner Cook and Commissioner Harvey. Vice Chair Hall was absent, and the other, the four members, the other four members present approved.
Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, may I just address one issue when, when you have a moment, now or later? Okay. And question was raised with regard to the adequacy of the SECA analysis and the treatment of those items deemed less than significant with mitigation incorporated. I just wanna note for the record that before you, in the agenda packet, are mitigation measures required for this project to specifically address those items that were called out by the commenter, and I wanted to make sure the council was aware of those mitigation measures being imposed on this project.
Thank you. Let's close the public hearing. Shelley, your card is late, but, so... Let's open the public hearing.
Again, I'm sorry I'm late. This project...
You were just hoping you didn't have to do that, huh?
I'm sorry, guys, but my, I was waiting for my husband to come home. He commutes, he's a land surveyor for LA County, he's a supervisor, and he just really wanted me to come up and let you guys know that if he wanted to live in San Fernando Valley, where there's a strip mall on every corner, then that's what he would do. We don't have to live up here. We can live down below. But we like keeping true to the lifestyle that we decided to, you know, we vowed to keep here in Lancaster. And, you know, we, he felt strongly that I should wait for him, you know, to come home, and just, I feel so strongly that this is not gonna be good for the community. It's like a project that keeps coming back to me, and I keep swatting it away or pushing it off to the side. And it just keeps coming back as a really bad idea.
How close do you live?
About four houses.
Four houses, huh?
I've already tried con, you know, I mean, yes, there's other properties, but it's the construction of this that's gonna be hard to handle for the horses. It's, now that they've, you know, changed the zoning, that too is, is gonna start a precedent all the way down. Some people will like it, most won't. Most people paid a lot of money for their property and would like to have seen that house that they outbid somebody on. They would, they would like to see that. Of course, we didn't have any knowledge that that was going on, that that bidding war was going on for that property. With, with so much vacant land, and so much vacant commercial land out there, it's, what's wrong? It's not being rented.
I get it.
Are we gonna, are we gonna, you know, have a, you know, oh, their Chevron, their mile-high Chevron is so beneficial to us? You know, that we have to give up our quality of life? I mean, I don't know if you're gonna lose, you know, are you gonna lose a lot of good people that live here now, and we like the way it is? It's a fly, it's a project that just doesn't need to happen in Lancaster. There's plenty of other places, if you wanna get your car washed. We all know all those places. We all know where the car washes are, where the gas stations are, private or non, you know, whether it's Costco or whether you wanna just go on 50th Street, you know, there's car washes all over. Gasoline stations, there's gonna be more foot traffic.
Thank you.
And...
I got it.
Okay.
You're not wrong.
It's just, I just think it's a, it's a project that could be done someplace else.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Let's close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we adopt Resolution 18-35 and introduce ordinance number 1043.
Is there a second? Second, that, let's vote. It's three to two.
With Mayor Paris and Councilmember Underwood Jacobs voting no.
Thank you. Let's move on. Let's open the public hearing on PH2.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna have Clarissa De La Cruz.
Last time you had her do it, look what happened.
She's been here seven months. She can handle.
All right, do a better job this time, okay? Actually, I thought you did a fabulous job. I just...
Thank you for that, Mayor Paris.
I can't believe you got sent up here on something this controversial.
That's okay, my very first meeting...
Let me suggest to you that you never walk with Jeff where there's a bus coming.
Understood. Thank you for the advice.
Thank you.
This item before you may sound very similar, and it is for a general plan amendment to amend the land use designation from non-urban to commercial, and a zone change from rural residential to commercial planned development. Site is located at the southeast corner of Avenue L and 22nd. Excuse me, I have the wrong document. The site is located at L and 22nd, and is approximately 2.11 acres.
The site is located at L and Twenty Second, and is approximately 2.11 acres. The site is currently vacant, and the proposed project will include a 93,000 square foot two-story self-storage building. The building would be used for self-storage with all of the storage units contained within the building. The site will have 25 parking spaces and a drive aisle that would be located on the east side of the parcel. The south side of the parcel would have a 28-foot drive aisle with landscape and walkways. The building would be set back approximately 69 feet from its closest point to the easterly proper line and 42 feet from the southerly property line. There would be 10 feet of landscaping adjacent to the southern and eastern property lines and landscaping of varying widths on the north and west side of the building. Vehicle access would be allowed from both Twenty Second Street and Avenue L. The facility would be open daily from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. On December 18th of 2017, the planning commission approved a conditional use permit and adopted a resolution recommending that the city council approve the general plan amendment and zone change for this project. There were no appeals filed on this item. Also, as part of the review process, and given concerns raised by the residents in the nearby community, staff suggested that the applicant conduct a public meeting to further address any additional community concerns. As part of that effort, the applicant will be adding additional landscaping to provide additional buffer areas, and has also agreed to pave both sides of Twenty Second Street for the length of the property, which is beyond the city's requirement. Staff believes that the proposed project is an appropriate use for the site, and lastly, the general plan amendment and zone change would not conflict with any of the goals, objectives, policies, or specific actions in the Lancaster general plan. And with that, staff recommends that the city council take action as identified in your staff report, and staff and the applicant are available should the council have questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Do we have an artist conception of what it actually is going to look like with the landscaping? That ain't it.
Sounds like the applicant has something a little bit more updated.
I'd like to see that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That signage sucks. I mean, I don't, I don't think anybody should have to live next to a building that says "storage" on it. I mean, just, we can do away with storage signs.
What, counsel?
You don't have any trouble getting rid of the signs? City attorney, can we make that a condition?
You, you, the applicant just agreed to it on the record, and I'll note that for the record, since it was not into a microphone, that the applicant is nodding and agreeing to that condition, so yes, yes, you can.
No signs bigger than two inches.
Oh, have we got a nod over there? That was a thumbs up, which I'm going to take as a cent.
Why are the sidewalks perpendicular?
I haven't seen what you're looking at. I would look, are they landscaped between the street and the sidewalk?
Yeah. Oh, you do have that, don't you?
Yeah. That was one of the.
I thought we were ribboning the sidewalks.
Either that, or when it's a short run, it's, it's landscape between the, the curve and the sidewalk, similar to Twentieth Street West.
That's not what this is showing.
Again, I haven't seen it, maybe Mr. Vos can talk about what this.
Yeah, the conditions, standard conditions, Mayor, that what you have in front of you is an artist rendering, it doesn't conform to the precise conditions that the commission approved and recommended to the city council. So, all that's in your backup material.
Mr. Mayor, the, on Avenue L, it is a meandering sidewalk.
Okay, good, thank you. All right. The, actually, on the signage, it seems like we might be able to do something more appropriately where it was intermittent, you know, like, if they have space available, they can put a sign out, but not any longer than, you know, two weeks or something like that. I mean, I don't want a permanent sign saying "storage," but at the same time, I don't want to make it totally.
So, Mayor, are you suggesting that, that this business has no identifier of it?
That's what I'm saying.
Really?
I mean, nobody wants to live next to a storage shed, right?
This is an interior storage building, it looks like, it looks like a, an office building, I mean.
That's right, make it look like an office building. You can't do that by putting a big storage sign up there, can you?
Interesting, okay, that, you know, it's your guys' decision, but.
I am just one vote.
We have, we have.
So not a, so not a monument? I mean, what's wrong, I mean, we have.
Monument works, monument works.
You just indicated no sign, so are you saying monument's okay?
What, do you just want to mess with me? Is that what you want to do?
No, I'm trying to figure it out, I'm trying to figure out what you're saying.
So what's wrong with a monument?
Well, I think, I think Mr. Mann has a legitimate point, that you don't have to put that big storage sign up on the building, and a monument sign might be more appropriate.
Can't have some type of identifier.
Yeah, monument sign typically is what you find on this type of a facility.
Well, look at the artist rendering, that's not what they did.
As I indicated to you.
I'm okay with a monument.
Yeah, we, we, there's two or three places in town that have monuments.
You guys good with a monument?
Yes, sir.
All right.
All right, so, when a motion is made, if any, inclusion of a limitation of signage to a monument sign only.
All right.
Would be appropriate.
Where'd Mark go?
As accepted by the applicant.
Paul Buckley? Good evening.
On December 7th, or December 18th, 2017, a hearing was held by the Lancaster Planning Commission, passed the motion to approve the zoning and land use for Avenue L and Twenty Second Street West. James Vos is the chairman and allowed the developer agent to present his case. Then the meeting was opened up to the public for comment. After the public had their say, then Mr. Vos allowed the developer spokesman to have the final say. We in the audience were not given a chance to rebut his assessment, we were told by Mr. Vos to shut up and sit down.
He says that to me every now and then, too.
After this day, the commission voted to approve the plan. In my, it is my opinion, and all of the neighbors that I spoke to thought that the fix was in for this project. The subject site is approximately 110 feet wide on Avenue L. Their plan that was approved by the commission calls for an entrance on Avenue L only. In the middle of Avenue L is two left-hand turn lanes, one pointing west for ingress onto Twenty Second Street West, and one pointing east for ingress onto Sunny Lane Street. There is physically no room for a left-hand turn lane into the subject property, and it should not be possible to share a left-hand turn lane with Twenty Second Street West. This city has a history of doing favors for the very well-connected members of the city. A case that they cannot deny is on Tenth West, where the new HW Hunter Dodge is going in. The city paid for all the drainage and sewers and said they will get the money back in future taxes collected on said property. They will not do the same for Twenty Second Street West, which is a private road, because we do not have the same connections as Jim Gillie and Frank Fiskel of the Tenth Street West project. This is a blatant example of what is wrong with the direction of the city of Lancaster is taking. If you plan on pushing this through, then I will gather names of neighbors who want to participate in a public entity claim against the city and secure the services of good lawyer to follow through with a lawsuit against the city and all parties involved. Now, the other thing is that if, on Twentieth West, if that land there, or if that street there gets overflowed with too much traffic, they cut down Twenty Second Street West, which is a dirt road down most of it. I personally have spent thousands of dollars putting gravel on that road and smoothing it out, so we have a decent road, just to have everybody tear it apart with their cars, spinning the tires and everything else. And at the original planning commission, they said there are no circumstances where there be an entrance on Twenty Second Street West. Now I get here, and they've changed it. There should not be any entrance on Twenty Second Street West, because people will be backed up Twenty Second Street West in front of all the property owners' houses there, and it will cause us not to have ingress, egress to our property, or cause us to have to go around the block. I live at L4 and Twenty Second Street West, right on the corner. I've got two streets that I've maintained for the, over the 15 years now, and I don't want to have to maintain those streets with all this extra traffic of cars pulling down Twenty Second West to go into a storage garage, giant moving trucks and vans and everything else coming down that street. I bought there because of, it was an RR1 lot, and I've got one and a quarter acre land. I do not want the traffic, the noise, or anything else that's associated with such use. A storage garage is not the best use for the community there, and the other thing is, the city does not have a general plan down Avenue L to address all the commercial that you're wanting to put in, you're just doing it haphazardly. I suggest that you turn this project down, you go back to the planning commission and plan the whole Avenue L, and let us all know what is on your mind as far as commercial development for Avenue L, before we start this little bit here and a little bit there. The one speaker that got up that used to own the property at Ellen Twentieth Street West was, I was told by his real estate agent that he's planning a public entity claim against the city over denying him the zone change. I don't know if that's going to pass.
Does anybody really think I'm afraid of a lawsuit? Seriously?
No, Randy, I don't think you're afraid of a lawsuit, Randy. I really don't think you're afraid of a lawsuit, Randy. You, you've made your money off of suing insurance companies and everything else, you know, and that's, that's where your money came from.
Pretty much, yeah.
And I understand.
But that's not my name.
What, Randy?
Randy, right.
It's Randy Rex Paris, according to Omar Conrad, and Mike Dietzel.
Damn, my mother should have told me that. All these years, 66 years, I didn't know what my name was.
Oh, shit.
Wow.
I'm glad you know now.
Thanks.
Have a good day.
Guess I don't know what mine is either.
Well, no wonder we can't get it right. Donna, I, I found you to be much more reasonable. And persuasive, I might add.
Well, I can't disagree with, with a vast majority of what Paul said. There was a, just a couple of weeks ago, and he might be able to confirm that for you, I, I actually had to call the Sheriff's Department, non-emergency number, for a wellness check, because we had somebody that had been laying on the side of the road there, transient, and he'd been there for three, almost four hours, and not moved. I mean, it's almost 100 degrees out, so I called for a wellness check on him, because lord knows I don't want somebody to die of heat. But at the same time, as I was thinking about that, going, oh goodness, we're going to have the additional from down there if they approve that, now we're going to have this here. The issue with the Joshua's, I think, has been dealt with. But on top of that, I live on a private road, okay? Y'all annexed it because you wanted to have control over all of the land around there. I know exactly why you annexed it, okay? I'm not an idiot. But the problem is, is we got a road that you don't maintain, okay? It's a private road. There was an accident, a big accident, involving motorcycle on, on Twentieth and L. You want to know where all those cars went that were doing 70 miles an hour down our dirt road, flying all over the place? Down Twenty Second, okay? If you're not going to maintain that road, then don't allow businesses on it that, one, are unattractive, I don't care.
You know, she's got a point.
How much you do there.
Okay, well, stop your, stop her time, but let's talk about that, she's got a point. Where are those, where are those cars going to go? I mean, we're not.
And it's more than just cars, we're talking moving vans, moving, large, heavy, heavy vehicles.
Well, we're not talking about a storage garage either, we're talking about a building that's a storage building, right?
Well, it's a storage facility, so I mean, you know, I mean.
But that's different than.
Most people that have rented them have, know that they've rented a, you know, moving van of sorts, you know, a large, it's, it's more than usually a one ton, more than a one ton.
I mean, I just, I just, I, I'm having trouble, I mean, I see your point on the other project, but I don't see it on this. I mean, I don't see a lot of traffic from it, I don't see it attracting a lot of undesirables.
Well, I can see it coming up Avenue M to Twenty Second, coming down Twenty Second.
I am concerned about the road.
You know, I mean, that's.
What do we do about their road?
I think Jeff can address it in the planning commission, they do talk about traffic circulation, paving the road, et cetera.
Yeah, the Twenty Second in front of the self-storage will be.
Well, that's in front, but what about cars that keep going down it?
Well, I would assume that those that are going to the storage would go on the paved road and make a left right into the storage. Those coming from south, I would assume would be mostly residents, but are on Twentieth, so.
That's, that's a, a grant assumption, that's not what they're going to do. If, if.
I think she's got a point, I think it's going to add, I think it's going to add a burden to that dirt road.
I would agree with you on if, on a narrow focus of people that are going to use Twenty Second. I would think most people that are coming from the south would use Twentieth, because it's paved, it's going to be faster, et cetera. Most people don't like driving on a dirt road, if you will. Also, in the planning commission and the documents, they do look at traffic circulation. Your assumption based on that is correct, that these don't generate a whole host of traffic, because people usually drop things off and pick it up.
I like the design, I mean, I, I think they've concealed what it is quite well, it does look like an office building, as long as we get rid of that sign, but.
I don't know if the planning commissioner, Jeff, can add anything else, but they do look at traffic circulation, number of trips that are going to be generated, et cetera. I don't know the details.
Despite how insulting he was, I, I think he had a, a point, that perhaps we should be looking at Avenue L with a general plan, rather than doing it a lot at a time, and so I would like you to develop a plan for that, all right, and who, who we put on it to do that, and so that the residents have a voice in it, all right? Perhaps even a vote. All right?
Got it.
Good.
But I also have to respectfully disagree with your, they'll come up Twentieth, they'll come up Avenue L, they'll, they'll do that. My friends, you know, I mean, i- if you Google Maps, that's what most people will do when they want directions, oh, just input here and, and go. Google Maps will take you to the shortest route. The shortest route's going to come up Avenue M, Twenty Second, straight to it. It's not going to say, let's route you here and over here and over there, and Google Maps doesn't know dirt from asphalt, okay? It doesn't.
We can, we can do traffic counts a lot cheaper than before.
Not when you have a partial.
Can't we just visual?
You've got partial asphalt.
Yes, correct, I think the, the trips were about 230 trips for the day.
Okay, so what, what happens if that goes up substantially, once this facility is put in place? What, what relief do we have for them?
Well, it's something that the city engineer, the city can look at as far as a capital project one day, if it warrants enough of the trips to warrant more pavement.
I mean.
Okay. All right, if we do the general plan, we could also add that into that, couldn't we?
I mean, you know, it was required that the builder put asphalt in front of my custom home, but the city doesn't maintain it, so it is breaking down. I'm not going to maintain it, because I'm not going to maintain something that is the city's.
How far down the street are, are you from this?
If it's L, I'm next to, I'm next door to him, so he's on the corner of L4, I'm right next to him.
Well, he makes me want to call Gillie and see if I can do it.
I'm, I'm right next door to him, so it's not far. I mean, it's, it's, you know, the asphalt that they're talking about, oh, it's asphalt right there, yes, there's a short little stretch of asphalt that y'all required for all the builders that built their homes right there. You guys maintain none of it.
Okay, Donna, tell me how far down you are, a block, two blocks, what?
You've got Avenue L?
From?
I'm L4.
From the project?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, L4, two blocks down.
Two rural blocks.
Two rural blocks.
Yeah.
My goodness. It's still cars, yeah, two rural blocks, but it's still.
Donna, can I ask you a quick question?
Certainly.
Certainly you don't want the entire street paved.
Well, that would be me saying, just take care of me.
No, 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 I'm, I'm looking at what you're saying about the traffic and the traffic.
We like you more than him.
We like you more than him.
So you're looking at, I'm sorry.
It's just a question, on the future side of it, are you, would you want the city to pave from M down 22nd, the entire street?
Exactly, and maintain it. Because if we're gonna have big vehicles that have, you know, couches, chairs, refrigerator, whatever, you know, in it.
You know the saying, pigs get fat, hogs get slaughtered.
I can sling a few good sayings out there. I'm the daughter of a military pilot, so I can sling a lot, a lot of good phrases out there.
All right.
I remember when there was nothing out here, when we were stationed at George and used to come out to Edward, so I know the, you know, the building that's gone on.
Wait a minute, you're way down the street.
Rural, you've got lots that are, so, I mean, L four.
All right.
They're still gonna come from 22nd and M and drive past my house to get to.
Okay, all right. We will, within the next 90 days, we'll have a procedure in place to do the general plan amendment for all of Avenue L. At that time, we will consider what the impact on those streets are and whether or not the city should be figuring out a way to deal with that, all right?
And can we please take into consideration the cow water issue that goes along with that whole?
I don't know how they're even building these darn things with the cow water problem.
You know, I mean, it just, you know, hit after hit, it's not hard to take.
How are you gonna run a car wash with cow water selling you the water?
Not in cow water.
It's not?
No.
Okay, I see.
The one that's before you is in cow water, the previous one is of West Side Farm.
I see.
Whitefens Farms.
Whitefens Farms is the one, this one's cow water. But our home value is impacted by this as well, as you would well know, so.
Well, you sort of won the first one, but I don't think you're gonna win this one. All right? Thanks.
Thanks.
Is Mark back?
I beg pardon?
No, okay. I guess that's it. Is there anything else?
Close the public hearing.
I will. I just wanna make certain I got everybody so I don't have to read them. All right, let's close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we adopt Resolution 18-36 and introduce ordinance 1044.
I'll second that motion.
With the?
With the monument added.
No sign on the building. Right? All right, good.
So with an added condition of no signage on the building, only a monument sign.
That would be allowed.
That would be allowed.
Thanks. Okay.
As agreed by the applicant.
And it's unanimous. Thank you. Let's take a break. Okay, we're back in session. PH three. Got another bus coming?
Well, hello. Mr. Mayor, can we open the public hearing, please?
Oh, public hearing is now open.
Great, thank you, I hope you're not sick of me just yet. This item is an amendment to Section 1740210 of the Lancaster Municipal Code, modifying off-premises advertising signs. On March 27th of this year, the City Council entered into a memorandum of understanding and partnership with Lamar Central Outdoor and directed staff to review and propose amendments to the zoning code that would increase development and design standards for off-premise signs, also known as billboards. The proposed amendment consists of revising outdated terminology and definitions, updating standards and deleting inconsistent information throughout the section of the municipal code, eliminating outdated location restrictions for relocation of billboards, and memorializing the review procedure for the review of billboard relocations. Also, the proposed amendments will incorporate design standards that would allow for improved design of such signs. Furthermore, all billboard relocation submittals will require action by the Architectural Design Commission to ensure that all signs are in line with the city's design guidelines and overall vision to improve the quality of design in the city. On May 14th, the Planning Commission recommended that the City Council approve these proposed changes, and with that, staff recommends that the City Council take action as identified in your staff report. Thank you.
Who approves it?
I'm sorry?
If they relocate a sign, who approves it?
It goes through an administrative process, as well as the Architectural Design Commission.
Okay, good. All right. Any questions? And Mr. Reeves.
Mayor Perez, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I really believe that the council can't vote on this measure. Councilman Chris and Councilman Molly received contributions from Lamar Sign Company, and I don't know what Mayor Perez's relationship as a client of Lamar. If that's the case, then three of you have to excuse yourself from this motion and can't vote. Thank you.
Did you guys take money from Lamar?
No.
Do I have a problem, City Attorney? I mean, we do put a lot of billboards up, I guess the folks noticed that. Not a secret.
I don't have your financial information regarding your relationship with Lamar, but what is?
They overcharge me every month. I mean, it's an outrageous amount. I mean, do you realize I could probably support half the population of Lancaster for the money I've paid them over my lifetime?
So this is, this is an entity to which you pay money, not an entity that pays money to you?
Oh, that's never happened to me.
Then, based on that information, I'm not aware of a basis for a conflict.
Sorry, Michael.
And we can vote on a company that gave us in-kind contributions?
To your election campaign?
Correct.
I'm aware of no conflict requirement that would require a recuse in that situation.
Okay, anybody else? Is there a motion?
I'll introduce ordinance number 1045.
Second that. Well, wait a minute, could I make them give me some of that money back?
That's not part of this action, and this action actually doesn't have anything to do with Lamar, I would note. This is an amendment to our ordinance.
Oh, it's for every sign company?
Yeah, it's every sign company, so I don't know what the nexus is between this and any particular sign company.
Which begs the question, is there another sign company?
That I don't know.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there's multiple. Well, maybe not specifically, there's lots of outdoor billboard companies.
Right. But this is an ordinance pertaining, this isn't an ordinance.
Listen, if there was another sign company, I wouldn't have to pay them as much. Trust me, all right?
Are you saying they have a monopoly?
I'm afraid they do.
Okay.
All right.
But I would think this is a good thing. There's very few cities that have design review committees looking at billboard signage.
I don't think anybody has an architectural commission.
Yeah.
I mean, we are really dressing it up. And they've actually done a pretty good job with changing the, going to the digital ones versus the others. I mean.
Yeah.
We never realized it before, for those of you who advertise on billboards, is you have the flexibility now of changing them rapidly. You know, it's all, we really like it. And as I've said before, we would not be anywhere near as successful as we are but for billboards. It's the best thing out there.
Yeah.
And I've always said that, but I do gotta tell you, they can gouge you if you let them. Now, that being said.
It would be appropriate to close the public hearing if.
I'm not done talking.
Oh, then never mind.
All right. All right, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
We already made the motion to second it.
Oh, can you do that before the public hearing is closed? I think you jumped the gun once again.
Again.
Once again.
Yeah, they didn't wait till the mayor was finished.
All right, let's vote. It's unanimous. Now, CA one, there has to be speaker cards on that, right?
No.
None. Michael, did you know that I'm about to appoint him as the vice mayor again? And you didn't have a speaker card? This was your shot. Didn't you see the play? I'm not gonna waste my shot. You could have been the next, what was that guy's, Hamilton? And you wasted your shot. Okay. All right. I can just make the appointments now? I can just nominate them now?
Yes, you nominate, and then.
Okay, these are one-year appointments, right?
Yes.
That's because I wanna hang it over your head.
The various terms, based on the various JPAs, it varies from entity to entity.
All right. All right, Vice Mayor Marvin Crist, Edwards Air Force Base Restoration Advisory Board, that will be Raj and Angela. We can do first names, right? Good. Antelope Valley Transit Authority, that will be Marvin Crist and Angela. Wait a minute. We'll be moving around later if we need to. Mr. Mann and I had a conversation today that we should perhaps be looking at a unified public works thing in regards to the roads and streets and, you know, because we got money coming in from different sources, but there isn't a unified group that is working with you on that. So Ken will work on that and with you guys to see if that's doable, just so you know. And that may necessitate changing things around a little bit, but that would be by agreement with everybody involved, okay? Air Quality Management. I thought I was gonna take that seat and you were going to be the alternate.
I'm fine.
Okay. So that's how we're gonna do that. Southern California Association of Governments.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, it's two appointees for AVA QMD.
That's right.
So it's.
But I have an alternate, right?
Oh, so, I'm sorry, who, it's you and.
I wanna, I wanna take the seat myself.
Okay.
With Mr. Crist, and Ken will be the alternate on that when I'm not available.
So the appointments are you, Mr. Mayor, the vice mayor, and then Mr. Mann is the alternate?
See, I'm the oil industry's poster child, so I figured it's just appropriate that I.
But just to be clear, that it's, Mr. Mann will be the first alternate, the other council is still able to sit on it if he's not available.
Okay.
Pursuant to our standing directive, yes.
All right. Southern California Association of Governments, that's Raj. Do you actually go to that? Anybody ever go to that?
No, that's the one that Hoffbauer sits on.
Oh.
It's scag.
They ever do anything?
Nope.
Don't say that, was Steve listening?
What?
It's a loaded.
That's a loaded question.
They take an exceptionally long time to do things.
You see, that's the difference between him and the mayor. Rather than just say they don't do a darn thing. All right, North County Transportation Coalition, ooh, that's the big one. I'm not limited to the council on that, am I?
I'd have to look in a second. I think it's, I think there has to be one council member business, I think it's one council member, but Allison will verify.
One council. One council member, one represented, but, excuse me, one representative appointed by the City Council from a business of, business or community organization, and a representative at large appointed by the City Council.
I wanna defer on that, and that's, I think the three, no, three of us can't meet, can we? Only two of you. Okay.
Only two.
All right, I wanna discuss it with one of you, pick who it's gonna be, and we'll make the appointments next meeting. Antelope Valley Fair Authority, JPA, that'll be Marvin Crist and Rob Perez, and yes, I forgot his name.
Michael Reeves.
Michael, that is nepotism, just.
I don't think so.
The Visitors Bureau of Lancaster, that'll be Mr. Mann. Lancaster Housing Authority, that'll be Marvin Crist, Mr. Mann, Cassandra Harvey, Kiri Zito, and Raj. The Southern California Regional Airport Authority, they doing anything?
Not that I'm aware of at all.
Does it have to be a council member?
Hold on, we have our cheat sheet.
Elected officer of the local governmental entity, so yes, council member.
It, maybe, because Mr. Molly sits on the High Desert Corridor, which would affect a lot of that going through there.
I thought you were shutting that down.
There's a strategy behind it.
I just think we ought to be transparent about those things. Okay, Raj, you got that? The, right?
Right.
Audit representative, Angela, that has to be you. I mean, you're the only one that knows how to count.
If I may, she is on there, and she does a really good job.
Okay, thank you.
Well, then that means you gotta be next.
What? I don't know how to count. Ask my wife.
No, no, if she's the audit rep, the mosquito abatement's next.
Yeah, mosquito abatement is next, and that's gonna be Evelyn Madrano. Stand up, Evelyn, say hi to the folks. California City Contract Cities Association, anybody going to that?
Not yet.
Any reason we should go to that?
Actually, yeah. It tends to be a little bit more staff with city managers, but there are times that a council presence would be helpful.
Does it have to be a council member?
Let's look at the cheat sheet.
It's not on the cheat sheet.
I believe the answer is yes, but we'd have to, if you wanna defer, we could do it next month.
Right here, I have Raj and Angela, but you guys gotta go if you're gonna take it. Do you want it?
Sure.
Do you want it? One of you gotta go.
Contract Cities.
Okay, that means you gotta sit next to that guy from.
Angela.
I guess it'd be that way, wouldn't it?
Mr. Mayor, just to confirm, Councilmember Underwood Jacobs is the representative, and
Councilmember Molly is the alternate?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now League of California Cities.
That, usually we do by resolution, but if we do it here, we don't have to. It's, when, at their annual convention, when they vote on resolutions, it hasn't really mattered, to be honest.
You know, I went to that when I was first elected, and I still draw on the workshops I went to, and I really think we should revisit whether or not everybody goes to that. But the point is, if we do go to that, and we spend the money, I don't wanna hear that, oh, you actually attended. I mean, remember, that was the comment, that in the past, I guess, council members would go but actually not attend the workshops. So why don't we schedule that, put it on the calendar, and let's do it? But I wanna make certain we attend those workshops because they're really valuable.
Okay.
I mean, I'm still taking guidance from that 10 years ago.
Yeah, we usually put it on the calendar this month, it's, this year it's September in Long Beach, so we'll get it on the calendar.
Okay, good. That's where it was when I went, actually.
I remember clearly.
Okay. Terrible hotel, though.
That was the part I remember, that was the first, my first trip with you as city manager, and we didn't get a good hotel.
A horrible hotel. All right. All right, is there a motion? To put all of that in one motion, and let's do it.
I think that we just second it.
You can second what the mayor just did, I just wanna make sure, the League of Cities voting delegate you're deferring?
No.
Oh, then I didn't get it.
Ken, I'm gonna put you on that, and I'm gonna put Raj on that as the alternate.
So Councilmember Mann is the delegate, and Councilmember Molly's the alternate?
And are we?
And are we remaining the same on the NCTC until the appointment?
Oh, we've got a meeting coming up?
Yeah, we have a critical meeting coming up, Mayor.
And I chair it.
And Marvin chairs it, so we clearly can't move him off there. Especially after we tried so...
Okay, well, let's appoint Marvin.
Good idea.
And then in two weeks, we'll finish it up, all right?
Good idea.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we worked so hard to...
Is that going to disrupt any plans if I do it that way?
No, as long as we can, let me, before you do that, can we keep it the same as we have it now until next meeting?
Currently, are you the delegate?
Yes, me, Ken, and Mark are the current delegates.
Yeah, so for NCTC... Mr. Mayor, may I request that you defer this item until... Except, or keep the current appointees in place until the next meeting so that there's not a disruption?
Okay, let's do that. Let's do that, all right. That's good. What I'm attempting to do here is I would like to see more people in the community that has an interest in this stuff rather than overload the council with these. I mean, I mean, it's not as like, you guys got day jobs, you know? Well, most of us have day jobs.
Yeah, I think you're, there's only one here that maybe...
I'm sorry, I'm sitting next to all these one percenters.
Do you know how hard we had to work to be a one percenter? Do you think that somebody just gave that to us?
Just saying it's, all right. I'll second that motion that the mayor just made on CA1.
We'll do it for all of it. Let's include it in it. Okay, let's vote. Good, thank you.
Unanimous.
Done. Council reports.
Does Angela want to do the ABTA? I saw you writing notes today, so it's...
Yeah, there was a couple of things in here. So there was a grant that, actually, three grants that were awarded to ABTA from the Transit and Integrity Rail Capital Program totaling $39,719,559. It's for capital improvements and operating dollars. Macy, our new director, is also doing something I've never seen before at ABTA. And he's actually having the team, the people that are in leadership positions, ride ABTA once a month, and I thought that that was a brilliant idea. As he spoke today, he talked a lot about innovation and wanting to do things differently where it was applicable, and I think that he is going to be a very nice addition to the team. The last part of that is that AV College currently has about 700 students that are, students that are riding to school for free.
Wow, that is...
So very impressed with that.
That's it, and if you look at the seniors that are doing it and the handicapped that are doing it, we have, and plus our veterans are all riding for free, but we have, half the busloads are actually riding for free, but they're, we're making a work over there. It's still, still number one.
And there's actually people in the buses?
Actually, people in the buses, and that's one thing that Macy talked about today, was looking at getting different grants. We're going to focus on, I think we've received $120 million in grants over the last couple of years. So we've received quite a bit of money, but we're now going to go after some of the, you asked us to look into running transportation out to Mojave. So we're going to do that.
I thought we were already doing it.
We are, but by doing that, it allows us to take advantage of going through disadvantaged communities, and by going through the disadvantaged community, we will be able to qualify for different grants. So it's working.
Good.
Thank you.
We're good? Any council reports?
They're not reported, but I just wanted to, a couple of weeks ago, we celebrated America on the billboard, and I just wanted to thank our staff. You guys did a wonderful job and it was a lot, good crowd and everybody was there, so just wanted to thank you.
Anything else? Didn't you do anything this last two weeks, Marvin?
Me?
Just curious. All right. Good. Housing Authority, no action. Financing Authority, no action. Power Authority, no action. Successor Agency, no action. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, three things. Number one, we have the Fourth of July in PBR Rodeo coming up on July 4th, a week from tomorrow. It's always a sellout for PBR and a lot of people set fireworks, so we're looking forward to that. We have talked about, you had tasked us with doing a video on employment. It's taken a little longer than we would have liked, but for a good reason. We have a video team on board and we've been able to secure footage and higher-end interviews with major employers, including the aerospace firms, but it took a little longer to schedule them, so we will be unveiling that at the July 24th council meeting. And we had a really good groundbreaking of Kensington a couple of weeks ago. The feeling that was there and watching all of the government entities, but also the nonprofits in the community and the faith base come together for a single purpose was really inspiring. I want to thank our staff, Toy Chisholm and Elizabeth Brubaker who worked on it, the supervisor, the mayor who was mentioned several times in there for setting the challenge out, and just the whole council for believing, and it's really going to be a game changer. So we have a video on that, which we'd like to show.
It's a big day for the entire United States. We're doing something different. We're doing something new. We're trying to solve the homeless problem, but it's a different technique, it's a different method. We ask for help, we look for private partnership, our faith-based community is involved, so it's, our entire community is involved. We're going to see it done by the end of the year, and it's something that the entire LA basin can look forward to and they can duplicate it.
This is a classic example of the community coming together and recognizing that this project is going to change lives and taking an attitude that we want to embrace it rather than say, fix it, but don't fix it in my neck of the woods. And today's groundbreaking is an example of where the community, community leaders, but also citizens have come together to say, we want to be a part of this and welcome them with open arms. Lancaster has approached us two-pronged. They've recognized there's a problem and have taken it seriously, but they've also worked with the county to offer solutions. And today's groundbreaking is just another classic example of how Lancaster works to really address this homeless issue.
What we want to do is to provide dignity and purpose, and our goal is to put 100 of these people and give them not just jobs, but make them work for themselves. One year, I want 100 of these people to actually own their own business. And to wake up in the morning and have something to do, that's the secret. There's no excuses why other jurisdictions can't do it. If we can move the mountain that we've done in five months and get this thing built, then you know what, everyone else has to pay their dues and do the same. We have a graded site with sewers and storm drains six months after this became a concept. I mean, the magnitude on that is unbelievable.
We love the opportunity to be a part of projects like this that are bringing permanent supportive housing to an area that needs it, and the opportunity also to make sure that we're providing wraparound services with that housing is tremendous, and we're very excited to be a lending partner here today. I think more sites like this can absolutely be a permanent solution. I mean, I think that's great that on this site in particular, there's going to be transitional housing as well as permanent housing. The goal really is to get people in permanent supportive housing, because that's really how you're going to end homelessness in the county and you're going to end it in the Antelope Valley. The work here that's being done in the Antelope Valley can actually serve as a model for how you really get at ending homelessness around the country. So I think people will begin to look at us here in the county, look at us here in the Antelope Valley for opportunities for how they can address their issues nationwide.
I feel like this is just the beginning, and hopefully we'll be standing here with you interviewing me with a vibrant community behind us in 12 months. There are many entities and many individuals that came together to make this happen, and that starts with Supervisor Catherine Barger, our amazing mayor Rex Parrish, everybody at City Hall, Mark Bozigan, Jason Claudel, Toy Chisholm, Jeff Hogan, Jocelyn Swain, the miracle worker Elizabeth Brubaker, also the CDC that gave us our most important capital funding, and also all of our lenders and my partners at Insight Development and the People Concerned. The city of Lancaster is like none other on this planet. Not only is there zero graft or, and minimal politics, but it's possible to get things done in the cleanest, fastest, most efficient way possible, because it is one of the most progressive and visionary cities of the world.
Mark, if I can, give a shout out to Joe. Joe did a phenomenal job as far as getting us national press on that, but the press all asked one question, why are we able to do this in Lancaster and nobody else is capable of doing it? And I think it's because of all the staff, everybody, and what you guys do out there. You know, you're supported by the city council, but you guys do the hard work, so thank you very much for what you guys do.
On behalf of staff. On behalf of staff, thank you. I was remiss in not thanking Jeff and his staff. Scott is fun to work with sometimes, but he's also quite the challenge, so thank you.
But he's got Wa.
That's what makes it all work.
She's one of the brightest people I've ever sat at a table with. Not quite a homeless shelter, you know, people were going to stone me for closing, but the, that was an amazing experience to just sit down at a table with people and then see that come to fruition so quickly. That was truly amazing. But it really is just getting the right people at the table and staying out of their way. I'm really proud of everybody for doing it. Okay, where are we? City Clerk?
This is the time to address the city council agency and authority on non-agendized matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the city manager.
Mr. Bartlett, put this... Okay, just go ahead and, so what do you want?
I don't know.
Jim Barletto?
Good evening, Mayor Parrish. Vice Mayor Christ and members of the council, and thank you for what you're doing here. When I was before you about almost three years ago with a problem with our water company. And at the time, I know you asked your city clerk, I mean, a city attorney to look into it, and I remember you said something about opening up the books and a few other things, but I don't know what happened, because very shortly after that, I was struck with a heart attack and double pneumonia. I quit going to the city meetings and I quit going to the board meetings, and I just kind of stayed away, and I mean, it's gotten worse, a whole lot worse. I can't believe some of the things that they're doing. I can go on and on, but it would take a whole lot more than just three minutes, but I'll just do the best I can. For example, other minutes, which should be a record of the company, they're not being done properly. They're raising rates on things without even telling the people about them. You could, I'm sorry?
You're talking about the Averydale Mutual Water Company?
Exactly, Mr. Christ, exactly. I managed that water company myself as their manager and president of the board for over 20 years, most likely 25. Right now, they just keep jacking those rates up, and it's not a become of the water. They are over too much payroll, way too much payroll, and I know what it takes to run a water company, but they don't want to listen to me. In fact, they don't even want me on the board. I was hoping to get on it about three months ago to see if maybe I could help them along, but no, they don't want my help. They want to do as they darn well please. So some of the other things that's going on, they buy laws that they try to change so they can give themselves more time, four-year term rather than a two-year. It didn't pass. First they said it passed, then it said it didn't pass, and then back it passed, and then almost two years later, they're saying it did not pass. Well, you can't use both of them, and this is what they're saying you should do, just use them both, the old bylaws that didn't pass and the new ones. I asked them at the last shareholders' meeting why there was only five or three names on the ballot to be reelected, and they said, well, what do you mean? I said, there should be six of you on here. None of you have been elected. Oh, well, AB 54 says we can do it this way. Well, I know AB 54 didn't say that. I'm just, I can go on and on, but there's a lot of things just way out of line, and they keep raising the rates, and they're just doing as they darn well please. They don't care about the law.
Thank you. You know, we're going to see more and more of this in regards to the water companies as it becomes more and more scarce. Isn't there, is there any move afoot to consolidate these water companies?
There is in discussions with the supervisor's office. I would characterize them as preliminary, and folks in the different water agencies are participating, but they'd be preliminary, and they don't always include the munis. Will probably not be at the forefront of that. They would probably be after.
Is there some way to stimulate that discussion so it takes more of a front seat?
We have a very good friend, both of us on the Water Master Board, who's doing just that. I spoke to that person today.
Okay, so it's moving forward, huh?
Absolutely. There's some promising ideas out there that will get it jump-start, so it doesn't have to wait two years. We could do it, you know, within a year.
I guess the Water Master Board could actually make it so there's no choice, just by holding back the water.
I don't know about that, but they're in a position to influence the folks that do it, so it makes more sense to join and consolidate than to go it alone.
The city attorney just gasped again, so I guess I should...
She does that regularly on Tuesdays when she's here.
I don't know that that's within their power to just withhold the water.
It was an inquiry. It was not a suggestion. Thank you. Okay, we will, we will pay more attention to this on a citywide basis and see what we can do.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parrish. There's at least eight places where they can make connection with LA County without any trouble. It's less than 100 feet.
Well, let's be careful what we wish for.
Thank you.
Thanks. David Paul?
I think he left.
Michelle Hernandez? No, you got to start with a smile, you know? The frown kind of makes us want to turn away.
Good evening, members of the council, Mayor. My name is Michelle Farhado Hernandez. I'm currently enrolled in a political science class at ABC, and for an assignment, I need to ask Mr. Mayor a question. What inspired you to become mayor?
What?
What inspired you to become mayor?
Well, you know, that would take a long time to explain. You know, ultimately, I was born in this city. I love this city. I love this city. I think we had something to contribute. And, you know, and ultimately, there were also selfish reasons in that it fulfills my life a lot more, being able to make that contribution. The downside was is I should have talked to my wife about it more than I did before I ran. So, for any of you who are planning to go into politics, make sure you get your wife or your husband consent because it took her a few years to forgive me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. You're right, too much information. All right. Bruce Hilton?
Good evening, council members, Mayor, Vice Mayor. I am also an ABC student at Political Science, and my question was, I came in here and looked at page nine, and this actually kind of brought the question back to mind. There's a lot of cases being brought against the city of Lancaster, and I was curious, being RX Parrish in the role you are, what do you have to do, if anything, if Parrish is representing any of the, I guess, members in these cases? Do you have to do anything to kind of remove yourself from, what is it, conflict of interest?
Well, I sort of wanted to be the one to decide how much they had to settle the case for, but the city attorney told me, no, that doesn't work. So, serious answer to your question is we don't sue the city.
You haven't had, nobody had come to Parrish to represent themselves?
Sure, they come, and we refer them out. You know, we can't represent them because there would be a conflict.
That's basically what you have to do is can't partake in it.
And do you realize how many millions and millions of dollars that saved the city? I mean, probably in the hundreds.
So, you're underestimating Allison's, Allison Burns's contribution on the opposing side?
Well... Ask her. Ask her how much money that saved the city.
All right, that was it. Thank you.
He's going to get an A.
Yes.
That was a good question, by the way. Thanks. Henry Paredes?
So, good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm also taking Political Science, and my professor's actually Amaga Dawn, and she's sitting back here with red shirt. Yes. So, I do have three questions, or a couple of questions, so...
What was her name again?
Amaga Dawn. Well, I think you already answered one of the questions, is any advice for somebody wanting to get into politics?
Talk to your spouse, yeah?
Yes. So, another question is, I do see a lot of members drinking coffee, so I was wondering what type of coffee you guys drink in?
Hot.
Hot coffee? Okay.
I think we're actually using that Krueger thing.
Krueger? Okay. And then...
It's not very good. You want to know the truth. I mean...
And on a side note, so, you know, the World Cup is happening, so, World Cup is coming to USA in 2026, so one of the main...
Is it coming to Lancaster?
It's in Los Angeles. It's coming to Los Angeles.
So, well, we didn't get it?
That doesn't mean we're not going to participate. They did want to headquarter this in Lancaster. We will certainly look at our facility for training.
I mean, with our soccer fields, they need a place to practice.
Yes, that's precisely my question.
That's exactly, that's exactly what we're, if I may, that's exactly what we're looking at, which is we have the largest facility by far near Los Angeles, so, for training overflow, et cetera.
We got the Chinese ambassador tomorrow. We could talk to them. I'm glad you brought this up.
Awesome.
It's something we could do here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Give him an A. Sean Pease. Oh, it's your turn. And you got to practice once. We're expecting a lot out of you now.
Thanks. Okay, so, good evening, Mayor Parrish, Vice Mayor Chris, and the members of the City Council. My name is Sean Robert Pease, and I am currently enrolled in the Political Science at ABC or Antelope Valley College, and I only have two questions now, since somebody else already asked the third one. First one was, why do you think so many politicians claim they support transparency but fail to do so?
You know, I'm the wrong guy to ask. I couldn't keep a secret if you, if I wanted to. I mean, I'm just, wouldn't you say I'm pretty transparent? Now, a lot, a lot depends on, you know, if you care what people think. I just don't, right?
My father enlightened me on what Obama said and stuff that I'm not very understanding on, so I don't want to go into details about that. And the other question was, if you knew any pros and cons to splitting the state of California into three states? Because...
I've never found it a good idea to divide your power. The more, the more power and cohesive it is, and the more you can motivate the people for a common interest, the more you're going to get, you know? Now, do we all disagree with each other? Yeah, we do. So what? We still have a common interest.
So, it'd be better to stick together as one state instead of splitting three and also cause some confusion and maybe new state flags if it were to be split into three new states?
Yeah, that's about what you get, is three flags. You can wave them.
I just, I was wondering, what's the point of it?
What we ought to be doing in California is recognizing, how do we capitalize on the power we have in ways that would bring more to us than currently is happening? And, you know, one of the ways is to make sure that we, our primary is one of the first primaries, because ultimately, that's why half these states get what they get, because of the impact they have on the presidential race. We should have the most impact.
Right.
We should be picking that president.
I just saw on the news, and it's coming for the November election, and I just wanted to know what's the benefit of it, or is there some benefit to it, and pros and cons, basically, just a bit? So, thank you for your input and time for my questions.
And every Democrat in the state should be voting for Republican congressional candidates. I mean, we'll have the House majority. I mean, the Speaker of the House is from our district. I mean, think about that. That is so much power and so much money. Disproiteratory. Thank you.
Thank you, and have a good night to you all.
Thanks. And that took a lot for me to say, didn't it?
Yeah. Two years ago.
I was going to ask what was in the coffee. Sometimes in politics, you just have to swallow your tongue, right?
Glad you blurflipped.
I can't believe I have to sit next to him. All right, Jasmine Surat?
Good evening. My name is Jasmine Surat.
Surat?
You're fine. And I'm also a student at ABC, and I am currently enrolled in Political Science. My question for you is, what have you done for the city to keep it safe?
What have I done for what?
The city to keep it safe.
Well, what do you, where do you want us to start?
Wherever you feel like.
We, we put a drone up in the air that watches the city. We developed a unique relationship with the sheriff, and we have more enforcement coming our way than perhaps we expected. We have the largest budget of all the cities in LA County that contract with the Sheriff's Department. It is something we deal with every single day, and we have Lisa Rodriguez, who's chairman of the Criminal Justice Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you. George Beatty. Beatty?
Mayor Parrish, Vice Mayor Chris, council members, ladies and gentlemen, my name is George Beatty Senior. I'm going to refresh your memory on one of my last meetings here. Mark, I apologize, I can't pronounce your last name.
Neither can he.
Bozigan. You mentioned the fact that the city does have a set plan on vacating empty homes that is full of trash, dead animals, namely cats and dogs and stuff. How do I get a copy of that?
The answer? It's not a written plan, it's a procedure. If you call, we follow the law. If there's a violation, we will go to the homeowner or the property owner, advise them with a citation, which I'm happy to give you a copy of the form that says you have this many days to mitigate this. If they don't, then we take it to Progressive. Next, we could file a suit in court, and then we can ultimately take the house, which we have done.
Okay, so you've already started a procedure at 2132 Beechwood Street?
We're in process with that one. Yeah, I don't know where is that.
I do notice a red padlock on the garage door now.
I'd have to look at the particular case, but that's the same one you brought up before. We're absolutely in the process.
Yes, and animal cruelty people are involved also?
Anything that had to do with animals, animal control is involved.
I mean, they were starved and no water.
The answer would be yes.
I got no idea if there was a survivor of the fittest that took place, you know?
The answer would be yes, I could...
And I do, and I am still concerned with the deputies' health and well-being, okay? This particular house should be cleaned by a hazmat group, okay? Not just a regular run-of-the-mill place, okay, people. It has to have protection for the people going in there. Evidence is the deputies going in to confirm on this, due process, that death took place, and they're coming out throwing up in the front yard. That's their health, okay? I'm very deeply concerned about it. And I have heard nobody mention that the deputies do have hazmat equipment in their trunk of their cars. I would refuse to go in myself if I was a deputy.
Deputies, and Todd can answer if he likes, deputies have a procedure, what they can and can't do, just like fire department.
Have due process, they got to do.
Well, no, it's not that. It's fire department, for example, certain people can only go in tunnels, for example, confined spaces, certain city employees are trained for that. Certain hazmat situations require beyond a deputy. They identify and call the appropriate resources in.
Okay, so the process will be followed then? Okay. Now, one person here mentioned child abuse. Last year, a child was tortured to death. I'll use the correct terminology here in Lancaster. Four of the LA County employees are pending trials. What's going to be taking place? Aren't we watching LA County people also or not? This is our city of Lancaster.
You know, George, let me, let me talk to you about that because I met with the number two man, what do you call him, Assistant Director?
He's the number two assistant.
Yeah, for Children's Services, and I'm very familiar with this latest incident. And there's some things we should keep in mind, is that Children's Services was involved in that two years ago. The new leadership of Children's Services are relatively new, so it was before their time. That's not by way of excuse, but just by way of recognizing who's responsible and who's not. The, and they recognize that there are definitely some issues that we need to change and work on, and with the Supervisor's Office, they're definitely exploring those. But it starts with the recognition that the system itself needs some changes. It's not necessarily the people.
And terminology, abuse? Come on, it's torture.
That's exactly what it was. There, there are some plans being made that I think have a lot of potential, and one of them is getting the community much more involved in the foster care system so that the, the mother of a lot of these children will live in the neighborhood where their child is. And so that there's a much more cohesive attempt by the neighborhoods, and especially the churches in those neighborhoods, to help rather than...
Yeah, this last one, they had everybody witness.
Right. There's also, you know, a recognition that there has to be a long-term monitoring situation developed once a child has been brought into the system, that they're always at risk.
Well, this last one was 2013 when it was first investigated.
And I used to be the biggest critic of Children's Services, but I, and I'm, I'm still skeptical, but encouraged by who's there now. And so, let's have this discussion in a year, and let's see if they've actually made some substantial progress. But I'm hopeful, and I've never been hopeful in regards to that agency, the 30 years I've been involved in the city. All right?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Shannon?
That won't go down for me, see?
Poor Shannon.
Everybody...
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, Deputy Mayors, both of you guys see here. I wanted to, I just wanted to bring up something I saw. I follow Catherine Barger, and I noticed that she'd mentioned that she's, she's really alarmed by the illegal dumping in LA County, but mainly, she's more alarmed by it in the Antelope Valley. And I will say this, I wanted to, I came up here to compliment the city because there was a, there was a stop sign knocked down. This is like the third or fourth time I've maybe called about something. And when I tell you that the city comes out so quick, I mean, I literally sat there and waited because I didn't want people to fly through that stop sign when I was on the phone with the Sheriff's Department, like, um, yeah, somebody just ran this stop sign down, it was gone. It was completely gone. By the time I started coming back to the direction of the house, here comes a city worker, like, I mean, it couldn't have been more than, it couldn't have been 10 minutes. And this is not the first time this has happened, and I want to say that I'm definitely very pleased and proud that we have a city that is doing these things, cleaning it up. I definitely want to be a part of that as much as possible, that effort. I had, this is a little side thing, I had a couple people a few years ago, one was my sister, another person, and they just don't care about the littering thing, and I'm totally, I get repulsed by it, it just gets on my nerves. I'm driving, and they literally took like their whole fast food stuff and just threw it out the window. I can't tell you how quickly I stopped, pulled over, made them get out and pick it up, because I just, I don't allow my children to litter, and then seeing graffiti, the graffiti, it's not very, it's not as much as it used to be. But the trash is definitely something that we need to, we need to work a little bit harder on. Just to let you know, too, I would have, I would have loved to take a, take a position here. I would have loved to take one of these positions if you needed me to, just to put that out there. And that's really all I had to say, which is give our city props once again of how, how prompt they are when it comes to taking care of, taking care of these really serious issues. And I just wanted to let you guys know, I appreciate, and that's why I'm glad to be a part of the city. You guys have a nice evening.
Thank you. Okay, Fran? See how easy this thing works for Front Row? It just goes right down?
Good evening again, Mayor Parrish, Vice Mayor Chris, council members, ladies and gentlemen. I guess you know my name is Fran. I just had a, I just, I'm kind of following through over the things that I spoke about in the past. I wanted to find out if, what is happening with the senior center, Lancaster Senior Center, because I haven't heard anything of any, I know the last time they had a problem with electrical was going to cost $250,000 to fix, but is there anything happening?
Somebody was underbid $250,000?
Yes, yes.
We were okay with that?
Yeah. No, it's about literally within a week of getting certificate of occupancy and being done. There were some change orders, I'm not aware that it was 250, but it's on the county's dime, the county's paying for it, and they have to work that out with the contractor. But it should be complete and certificate of occupancy within a week.
Oh, great, okay, good. Then I also wanted to follow through about the, the front steps of that business on Lancaster Boulevard. The address is 568 West Lancaster Boulevard, because it has, doesn't have access for disabled to get into that building. You have to go in through the back, as well as the businesses on the side on Cedar. So, I'm just following through. through with that, if anything has been done with that, if...
You know, Fran, the problem we have with those businesses is, is just economically impossible for them to make the changes. And I think we have to recognize that. And they're compliant with the law. The, and I'm reluctant to do anything that's gonna drive somebody out of business because they can't afford the structural modifications. As long as there is access, I mean, maybe I'm wrong about it, but I don't think so.
Okay, because you know, you have to go through the back of the building.
And as, and I don't like that. I don't, I think it's regrettable. But what's the alternative? The alternative is to not have a business there at all. Because if you require that level of structural modification, they're gonna either go out of business or go someplace else.
Yeah, well, thank you, just the same, for trying.
Okay, thank you.
Another thing was on the skateboarding. I know that, all these things I know are kind of minute to...
Two weeks ago, I told you guys to get a skateboard park. What the heck?
Yeah, what happened?
You gave us longer than two weeks.
Oh, okay.
I have the note, I forget the time, I know it's longer than two weeks.
Well, you know, after...
It says two years.
After what Scotten...
It's two years.
What after, after what Scottenwall did with that homeless situation, I mean, 14 acres, overnight, you ought to be able to do a skateboard park.
We will have a skateboard park, you have our word.
Okay, thank you. And by the way, that groundbreaking ceremony and the way this Kensington campus is gonna, it is fantastic. It is, and everybody I tell, I'm so proud to say that Lancaster is doing something about it, not just talking about it. And I'm very proud to be in Lancaster, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we got anything else? You good? Okay. Any comments? Anything?
No, nothing tonight.
Okay. I think you've said enough. There, I said enough. I would, I would like to suggest, perhaps, we look into some sensitivity training for the planning commission. Just a thought. I'm one of the most sensitive people you'd ever want to meet.
I heard, I heard, you know?
And you read it, too. Okay, just to, with that being said, we don't have an executive or a closed session? No, we do not.
No closed session.
Does that mean nobody's suing us?
That means we don't need to talk about it.
Oh. You see, if we were suing the city, you'd be talking. All right, the next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, July 10, 2018, at 5:00 p.m. I hope everybody has a wonderful 4th of July and attends the fireworks at the fairgrounds. And Carol, my day is done, but I gotta go talk to Marvin, so I'll be home late.